Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. Call this meeting to order. Jared, will you please call the roll? And he's not. Hold on a second.
Tell him to hurry because we're going to do this whole thing in an hour.
That long?
I looked around just to see the expressions on everybody's face. Got Megan instantaneously laughing. A sarcastic response from you. Kim's grinning. Very sarcastic grin. And Michelle missed it because she was looking for Derek.
Roll call, please.
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Who? Councilman Colacott.
Here.
Councilman Fasenelli.
Here.
Councilman Nelson.
Here.
Mayor Proten Barnett.
Present.
Mayor Mills.
Here.
Today, I will ask Commander Black if he could please lead us in the pledge. Please still stand.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight, we welcome everybody that's in the chambers this night and welcome to this meeting. We encourage your participation, as you know from the past and the history of this great city we were so fortunate to live in. If you wish to address the City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card, which is in the rear here, and pass it over to the City Manager Jared here to my right. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance there in the back and hopefully you have a pen. There's also some back there as well. Speakers will be limited to a period of time, a time period of five minutes typically per topic that we have. And we'd also like to have polite decorum in this chamber for everyone in this chamber when we're doing all the business of the City of Villa Park. Right now, we'd like to start with presentations, a little different order tonight than it was the last time. And we'd like to start with the Orange County Fire Authority since Lieutenant Gunsel hasn't arrived yet.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for an opportunity to report out on behalf of the Orange County Fire Authority. Since we last met, Villa Park received forty-seven calls for service. Forty-six of those were emergency medical calls and one of those was a reported fire. It was not, ended up being a fire. It ended up being food on the stove. We, uh, we consider this a pretty successful holiday season for us through the holidays here. No structure fires, no holiday-related type of structure fires. Hats off to the community of Villa Park. That's great. We often see some of those holiday-related type of incidences. And we had a very successful holiday season participating here in Villa Park with all of the festivities as we usually do and we thank you for that opportunity. Unless there's any questions.
Council? Thank you.
Thank you.
The next presentation, a report for the OC mosquito and vector control.
Uh, yes. Last Thursday, the 21st, I attended my first Orange County mosquito and vector control district board meeting. The first thing we did at the meeting was elect a new board president for 2016. That was Dr. Alan Bernstein of Tustin was elected the new board president. The old board president was, is off the board after eight years. Sean Fitzgerald from Discovery Cube Orange County summarized the first month of the district's inactive exhibit. You know, that's exhibit where they contributed $1 million over ten years to the exhibit. The grand opening was in June of 2015 and so far they've had ninety-four thousand four hundred and forty-five guests so far. So it appears to be doing very well.
Excellent.
Yeah. The board reviewed the annual audit. There was a clean audit, no issues with the audit. And also they brought up the fact there's a new vector borne virus called Zika that spread from South America to this area. It apparently in South America has caused some brain damage in infants when it infected pregnant women and it's a new, new virus here in this area as well. The board appointed a new general manager, Richard Howard, effective February the 29th, 2016. The current general manager, Michael Hurst, will stay until the 29th. Richard was the general manager for town of Discovery Bay Community Service District in Northern California prior to his appointment. The board also voted on his contract and objected to the opening contract they presented. So I made a substitute motion to have a term of four years and the motion passed by twelve to eleven with two extensions. That's my report for the vector control district.
Thank you, Bill. The next on the list tonight is Orange County Sanitation District. There was not a meeting for the administrative committee, which is what we are on, is the City of Villa Park for the sanitation district. There was not a meeting last week, but there will be a meeting tomorrow and I'll be reporting on that meeting at the next City Council meeting. The next is the library. Any report on the library board?
No report.
There's no report on the library board. I was not advised of the meeting in time to be able to attend.
Okay. Okay, budget and finance.
Uh, the budget and finance committee met and we went over the new financial software that's on the agenda for tonight, on the concerned agenda, I believe.
Okay. CDC. Bob?
Uh, yeah. The Community Development and Public Safety Committee met on January 12th and we discussed the status of the development of the ordinances to control neighborhood disturbances. As you recall, there's, at our last council meeting, there are some concerns with a, one residence in particular and we're looking to help address that. We also discussed the status of the development activities in the city and no requests were, variances were received by the Community Development Committee last month. So it was a pretty quiet meeting.
Thank you, Bob. In this, in this arena, Jared, could you give a brief summary of our meeting from Saturday?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Residents sure turned out this last Saturday to express their opinions on the street improvements on Mesa Drive, Loma Street and Valley Drive. They were adamant that the trees should not be removed. They want to preserve the rural nature as much as possible. So for the portion of Mesa Drive, we're going to look to widen it to the, to the standard width of 24 feet. That will bring it up from the narrowest portion of, I believe, 20 feet by about four feet. Some areas, it's 23, maybe foot on each side. We're also going to look at the drainage culvert that's on the east side of the street. Perhaps we can fill that in and create some sort of landing pads for the trashcans. As for Valley Drive, we're going to look for curb and gutter on the south side of the street to help with drainage and then nothing for Loma except for a small 50-foot section of roadway that will widen to the 24 feet. Curb, or trails and sidewalks are off the table. And then two other takeaways from that meeting are that the city will review its master plan for recreational trails in the neighborhood. Try to leave them to the collector streets and out of the residential streets. And we're also going to look at, I believe it's a 1978 municipal code provision that requires street dedications and improvements if a homeowner exceeds a 300 square foot threshold when either adding or altering their home. So a lot of takeaways and a lot of work, but it was, it was a great meeting on Saturday.
Thank you, Jared. You have a little more complete report later on than next month? Is that be right? A more complete report will be following up?
A complete report will follow up when we bring back the plans for, for the area.
Thank you. The proposed plans, okay. Okay.
But can I ask a question? The issue regarding the municipality code regarding the 300 square feet, that's kind of a separate issue. It doesn't go along with that design. So can that come back at the, can that come back next month at the council?
It will, yes. That's, that's a pretty easy one to cure and we'll bring that up in February.
Okay.
And then in February, we can also look at the recreational trails for the master plans. See how full the agenda is and I'll set that with the mayor.
I think that's a good point. Thank you. Could you comment on that? Actually, this particular provision did not allow certain people to really, actually it, it hindered them from improving their property because of 300-foot, square foot addition to any of their homes or properties. And this is something that we would like to, I think, eliminate effectively so that we don't want to discourage anyone from improving their house here in town. So that's the reason for that particular provision that we will look at and probably retract in some effective way.
You know, I've got a quick comment on that widening Mesa by the four feet because I run that in the mornings. You know, if you invite cars an extra four feet on there because there's nowhere on the downside, I assume you're talking on the trench side? That's the side you're going for?
Yeah. We'll have to take a look at it, yes. In the narrowest portion, it's 20 feet and the standard width of the roadway should be 24.
Here's, here's the problem there. If you do that and invite cars on that, there's going to be no place to step aside if you're out there. I mean, at least now, there's a little bit on the side if a car comes, if you have to step off. If you pave it over there, there's going to be no place to go if a car comes whipping through there. And I had, I had intended at some point to suggest that we consider either some, some little decorative landings as we go where people could step out if a car is coming or, or something or a trail on the side. But if you just widen that road by four feet, there's no place to go. That's, that's a tough road if somebody doesn't, doesn't see you.
I think that's going to be part of the design stuff that we talked, that was pretty well thrashed out too. I think there'd be a lot of safety issues. That's the main reason this was brought up anyway. And so we're going to, I think that, that's a good point.
I just ran that this morning and I was looking at it. And I'm thinking, you put four feet more on here, there'd be no place to go.
Right. Okay. Next, Lieutenant Gunsel, could you update us on the Sheriff's Department?
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, first I apologize for being late. There's more people at Sheriff's Headquarters than I've seen in my life, so it's, as you can imagine. We've got US Marshals, we've got FBI, we have everyone there. So I couldn't even get my car out for 20 minutes. I'm sorry. Okay, for December's Part One crimes, there's a total of nine for December. One residential burglary, one vehicle burglary, five petty thefts and two vandalisms. For in the details on that and, and as far as the petty thefts, there was one, one street where a person hit several, several vehicles, all were unlocked. So for that three unlocked vehicles, again, as we always speak to, just don't leave valuables in your car and, and open where people can see them. The residential burglary, that was a house under construction, unoccupied at the time of the theft and, and they believe it was unlocked because there was no sign of forced entry. The vehicle burglary was a wallet, again, in plain sight. They smashed the window and took the wallet with $85 in there. One of the other petty thefts, someone took a, removed a side view mirror from a vehicle. That was kind of unusual. The, one of the, the last theft we had was also from an unlocked vehicle. On this one, there was, it looks like some construction equipment, flashlight, a grinder and some cash in there. So just miscellaneous things. And two of the vandalisms, one was at the high school where someone pulled off a driver's side mirror and then the other one was a, looked like it was probably, someone struck the side of a car with a, with a lug wrench. So that isn't a random act. That was something I would think purposeful. So to go over last year versus issues, 2014, we had a total for the year of 77 Part One crimes. In 2015, we have 88, so we're 11 more. Analyzing the differences, there were seven more residential burglaries. The grand thefts, there was two more. There was 16 more petty thefts. So those went way up. And again, those are, as we talked about, people leaving their cars unlocked and valuables in there. So that's one of the things that we need to deal with and maybe an education program where we can, further education program where we can advise people not to leave the things in their car. Lastly, what I, what I want to, this isn't going to come up on the stats, so I want to make sure that, that I gave credit where credit's due. Many of you may have seen or heard the, the crash and things that happened, but over on Bishop, right behind City Hall here, basically on that one, I said, won't show up on the stats because of the crimes and collisions and things aren't on here. Basically on that one, the day shift deputy Spence Muir saw a car sitting over next to B of A in the back alley there. Just no profile or anything, just looks suspicious to him. He's, that something here doesn't look right. So he pulled around the corner and, and over the high school wall, watched the guys. He's thinking maybe they're going to rob the bank or something. Wasn't that, but he wasn't quite sure what was going on. The vehicle left, turned out by Wayne's Liquor. As Deputy Muir pulled out from the high school, they saw him, they turned back in and they were doing the okey doke in the parking lot for a while. This vehicle is a newer model, five series BMW, I think, very fast, very expensive car. Turned right and punched it. Spence was caught behind another vehicle. By the time he got out, the car was out of sight. He raced up towards Meats, couldn't find him. So he turned back around and started getting waved down. He didn't see it, the, some, the car had hit the wall at, at Bishop in Santiago there. Basically what had happened is he was coming around, the suspect vehicle was coming around the vehicle and pitted himself. He hit the car and spun out and hit the wall and then sped down Bishop, not knowing it was a, it was a cul-de-sac. I think there was 80 feet of skid down there when he realized it was a cul-de-sac. Tells you how fast he was going. Anyway, the driver and the passenger fled from the vehicle. So by the time Deputy Muir got there, these guys were, had walked away. They started getting calls, 911 from good neighbors, reporting what was going on. He ended up finding the two walking down Santiago towards Wanda, or excuse me, towards Cotella, Villa Park Road. And soon as they saw him, they split up. So there was some gun pointing going on and some, some foul language as it is, but he got these two guys detained and basically thought the car was stolen. They had all kinds of fraudulent, they're from Florida. I don't think they knew they're in Villa Park. They had fraudulent documents with them. They gave false names. Anyway, just outstanding, I won't go into detail about the crimes on these guys. As I said, they won't show up on the stats next month because it was a couple of weeks ago, but outstanding police work by Spence Muir, great instincts. Two guys in custody that shouldn't have been cruising around Villa Park. So I just want to make sure I gave credit where credit was due. Any questions for me?
No, thank you. Thank you and your, your staff. It's great. Right, thank you. Thank you.
To piggyback off that, the wall that they damaged was a city wall and Maintenance Supervisor Mike Knowles received three bids and will have it constructed and repaired in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Thank you, Jared. I'd like to continue with the presentations, human resources. Jared? No report this month?
Uh, the committee did not meet.
Okay. City Schools Advisory? Don't think they met either. Law Enforcement Advisory? Thank you, Vince. I see you've got some good help there, too.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, Villa Park residents and friends. It's a pleasure to be here again with you. We had a meeting on January 12th, 2016 at Serrano Water District and discussed several items, some of which Lieutenant Gunsel has already gone over. I won't rehash those. But a few things that I think are significant and worth noting. We are still actively recruiting for the Professional Services Responder Program. We are trying to reconstitute and re-energize and refresh our Community Emergency Response Team Program. We're looking for folks that are interested in potentially co-chairing or co-leading that organization. I know that the council is going to be considering that in the future. We do have two professional service responder volunteers that are going through the program. They're going to work within our community, specifically for our community. They can obviously work in other parts of Orange County. They'll be trained through the Orange County Sheriff's Department to deal with low-level, non-emergent type of law enforcement needs. Little, little bit less than a deputy reserve sheriff, but still extremely helpful and will help hopefully reduce the crime that we have in our community, deter it from happening to begin with. We also may have an Orange County Sheriff's Department Reserve Investigator hopefully coming online next month to help again with crimes that have occurred and then prevent future crimes from occurring. All of which, this won't cost our city anything, which, small city, small budget, try to stretch our resources as, as much as we can to keep our taxes where they're at. We're also continuing to look into the purchase of a used patrol vehicle. Sounds like our efforts, I should say the city's efforts, to get one from Irvine didn't work out, but we're lucky. We have great relationship with the City of Orange and for our city manager, it sounds like it's a done deal. Got a month or two and some bureaucratic paperwork and a meeting or two to go through and we'll have that for our PSRs that are courageous enough and caring enough to volunteer for our community as well as our deputy sheriffs, reserve sheriffs that volunteer and, and lead anti-burglary patrols in our community. That was one of the key things that our lieutenant in charge of police services asked for and we're delivering on. And we want to give our volunteers all the resources that we can give them. We're also looking into potentially some donations as well as equipment to equip these vehicles. They're basically rudimentary vehicles. We need to equip them and we're, got a couple of resources that are on the committee that have contacts and again, trying to keep the expenditure to the city to little or nothing. Roadway, another item that we discussed, the status of roadway and engineering recommendations. Part of what our committee does is based upon our training and experience in traffic enforcement and roadway engineering, make recommendations. We have some, we have some wonderful streets, but we have some streets that need a little bit of work. Some reflective materials are obviously needed in certain parts of our city. We've had some near misses and some collisions into stop signs, for instance. Center at Taft comes to mind. There's some parts of Valley Drive and, and other parts of the city that need some attention and, and we're working with our city staff on that. And that's more or less about it. We've got some ordinances that are going to be going forward to curb some unruly neighbors that have made some, have not made friends with their neighbors. We've got some students that came in from a local university, which is a good neighbor, that university, but unfortunately, some of the young men that have decided to take ownership, or should say rent, in our community have not been very respectful to their neighbors. And we're trying to work with them, work with the landlord, work with the neighbors to come to an amicable understanding and also strengthen some of our codes so that in case they don't work and play with, with others, that they, they understand that that's not going to be tolerated in Villa Park. It's a, this is a family community and it's not a, it's not a fraternity house. So that's really about it. I want to thank Mayor Mills and Councilman Colacott for being at the meeting. I'd like to welcome Mayor Mills, a new addition to the LEAC crew. And I'd like to thank outgoing member, council member Bill Nelson, who was instrumental in our committee. And thank you all for being there. Thank you for your continued support. Thank you most of all for listening to the community at the last meeting and understanding that this is a very important committee. And I just wish everybody a peaceful and prosperous 2016. God bless.
Thank you, Vince.
I have a question, Vince.
Yes, Mayor.
Regarding the police vehicle. At the last community foundation meeting, the money had yet been given to the city. I know that Mr. White donated the money to the foundation back in August and the money has yet to be released to the city to purchase it. Has it since the meeting and today been released? Do you know that?
You know, that's really a, a great question and it's something that we've been staying in touch with our city manager on. I know that that is something that the ball was transferred to his court on that and that's something that he has been trying to follow through on. Jared, would you like to enlighten us what's going on with that?
I have not received the check yet. I, I do know at the last meeting, they authorized the release of it. I provided them the letter, the documentation that they wanted where they would not be held liable, but to date, I have not received a check from the foundation.
Well, Mr. White's been very generous to donate.
Absolutely.
A very good amount of money to us and to hold on to that money since August is...
I couldn't agree more.
I don't know what the problem is, but we either, we need to take care of it, get the money to the city or...
I couldn't agree more.
Or return it to Mr. White and he can give it to us. So we could take care of it by the police vehicle.
Any further questions?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next Investment Advisory?
Investment Advisory Committee had a quarterly meeting last week. Unfortunately, one of our members, Steve Pollock, attended his resignation at the end of the meeting. So he's retiring and moving to Arizona. He's a real loss. The committee reviewed the investment portfolio, activity transaction and performance. And the committee also discussed the PARS presentation they had at the last meeting about pre-funding a pension and other post-employment benefit obligations through a Section 115 trust. The members had many questions regarding this type of trust and what would be the appropriate vendor for it. So the committee appointed a task force, Chair Underwood and a member, Lynn Doughty, to meet with a local agency that has a PARS trust and try to get some answers to some of these questions. And I'm going to try and arrange a meeting with Mesa Water District. I know that does have that type of trust and have done a lot of analysis on this. And we're going to try and meet with them and get a better understanding of how this trust works. But my understanding is that the trust will allow us to take our unfunded pension liabilities and the other post-employment benefits liability and to reduce those by putting money into a trust that can earn a higher interest rate than what we are earning now on our investments. Because they don't have to, they don't have to comply with the government regulations on investments. They're allowed to invest in equities, they can get a higher return. And it, in a, in a long-term, it saves the city money in paying off the obligations. Because the way we do it now, we're on a kind of pay-as-you-go basis. And this is where you can put in the trust and pay much of the expense on earnings from the trust. But they, they had a lot of questions, so we're going to find out those answers before we bring it to the council.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for, for Bill on that? Thank you. The Community Services Foundation, any notes from the foundation?
Yes, I, I attended the Community Services Foundation meeting, I believe it was on January 11th. I presented the City Council's request to provide bridge funding for the senior mobility or taxi program and, which is what we asked, we agreed to do at the last council meeting. The response I got back from the Community Service Foundation Board was that, that we need to submit a grant request. So they were unable to agendize that item for consideration at that meeting, although they did encourage us to submit a grant application. They also expressed concern that the council had not provided adequate conditions on the use of the service, which led to premature exhaustion of the OCTA grant funds. So they want our grant application when we do submit it. Maybe it's already been submitted, to specify adequate conditions such as a reduced radius of service, a copay, the, the fact, evidence that there's a lack of driver's license or ability to drive. And they also would like us to include a provision for prioritization of purposes such as shopping or pharmacy visits, but not provide support for just going out for entertainment or dining. And that was the response back from the Community Services Foundation Board.
Okay. Thank you, Bob. The next report, your friends at the VP of Library? Any report? I don't think we...
There was a meeting, but I wasn't notified of the meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Thanks for the reports. That's another reason we are, we're putting together a, basically a city calendar to make sure all these meetings are noted on an annual basis as much as we know in advance. And I know that the staff is working on that. It is a, it's, it's an onerous task. There's a lot of things going on, even in a little city like ours, but we have a lot of regional meetings, there's a lot of other meetings with other, other organizations such as for OCTA, the sanitation, vector, et cetera. All these meetings are, we'd like to have them noted. So the citizens here could actually come to those meetings and attend. come to those meetings and attend and see how it works. It's very interesting, actually, and I'm glad that I'm on the city council, as I know my colleagues are, that there's a lot of things I didn't realize go on in the background that make everything work very, very smoothly. Now, we'd like to move on to public comments. Members of the public, of course, may address the council. We have, I have one speaker card here right now. Is there any more, Jared? Coming?
No, it's written.
And this is for any topic that's not on the agenda already, that's been printed out and out for almost a week now. So, we can't take any action and also, we really can't comment from the dais about anything that anyone says up here. So, we'd like to proceed with that. You're limited to five minutes typically and unless the mayor lets you go on. And first be Sandy Merg, would you please come forward?
First and last. Sandra Merg, 9281 Trit Circle, Villa Park. July 11th, Gwen McEloney's home was flooded because her sewage, sanitary sewage was not cleaned up. Now, I understand that we had a tax collected so that our sewers could be taken care of. I do believe that her insurance company is now suing Villa Park for a couple hundred thousand dollars because it took until now, she just got her furniture back. She got so sick from everything, she got the shingles. And what I'm thinking, want to say, I know that we had voted the money at one time to have these sewers maintained and I don't, I think you need to get the infrastructure back to maintaining the sewers and forget the green belts for a little while because right now, I think they're backed up. Amongst yourself, you would know that. But if you talked to Gwen and she cried like to me, you know, if you could hear what she went through and her tears, I'm up here to ask you, would you please remember to take care of our infrastructure? And I already know what I want to do here is present these pictures of Mesa. That's the one I was going to come that my daughter almost got killed on the other day. And I'd like to leave you these pictures because this is, she put where it's too skinny and everything like that. And I just want to present these, if I may?
Of course.
So, that when you do discuss it, there's, people like to walk their dogs. You already know, you already had a meeting that I didn't know was on and she was out in Florida, so she didn't know it was on. But please, take care of our sewers, take care of the street. We already got one lawsuit here, we don't need another. And because you didn't do the sewers, don't we have a lawsuit? I think her insurance company is suing you for a couple hundred thousand. We could have had them all cleaned for that probably. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. With that, I'm going to close public comment at this point. Unless there's anybody else before we close public comment? Okay. Tonight, we'd like to have public hearings and the first one is going to be waived, reading and full of all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda. We do this every meeting, by the way, because it has to be done that way. And so, do I have a motion?
I'll move, I'll move the motion.
Okay.
Second.
We have first and a motion and a second?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett.
Yes.
Councilman Colacott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli.
Yes.
Mayor Mills.
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
The second public hearing tonight is regarding a policy regarding payments by members of the city council for health benefits through the California Public Employees Retirement System.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I am going to recuse myself on this item as I did the last month.
Okay.
Have a talk with me.
Thank you. Jared, could you proceed, please?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Let me pull up my PowerPoint real quickly. This is a policy that we've been discussing for a couple, couple of months now. Policy before you tonight concerns... Let me get it real quick. It's coming, I promise. There we go. So, the policy before you tonight, a light concerning councilmember health reimbursement payments is that on the first business day of the month, staff will mail an invoice for next month's premium. That premium payment will be due by the end of the month. If it's not paid by the end of the month, a $50 late fee will be added and then staff will via certified mail send out a first notice of cancellation. That will be due by the 10th of the covered month. If not paid by the 10th, we'll send out a second notice of cancellation, which is what is required by CalPERS via certified mail. The policy proposed would be due by the 20th of the covered month and if not paid by the 20th, we will forward to CalPERS for termination. Now, how that actually plays out on paper is, let's say if we want this effect of April 1st, which is our recommendation, on April 1st, the finance director will mail an invoice for May's premium payment. May's premium payment will be due April 30th. If not paid by April 30th, on May 2nd, which is the next business day, will issue a $50 late fee, send the first notice of cancellation and it will be due by May 10th. That will be sent via certified mail. On May 2nd, we will also issue an invoice for June's premium payment. So, they'll have two invoices out at once and that will be due May 30th. So, if May's premium, which is April's invoice, is not paid by May 10th, then on May 11th, the finance director will mail a second notice of cancellation, which is due on the 20th. If May's premium, again, April's invoice, is not paid by May 20th, we'll forward it to CalPERS for termination and then we'll also have to collect June's premium payment because we pay our bill on the 6th of every month. So, if we notify termination on the 20th, they'll essentially have two months of premium payments that would be delinquent. So, termination will essentially be, you know, 60 days from, two months, from the month that they're behind. That's a policy that's laid out before you and we're available for any questions.
Please, Nelson, note, because we have copies of this, as you have too. The city's not liable or will be forgiving any monies that are due the city if this is breached. Is that correct, Jared? There is a provision in this policy which allows liens. So, there is going to be no forgiveness by the city for any monies owed to this program. And I thought that was a very important part because we've talked about this extensively the last meeting or two. So, I will bring this back to council for any comments for right now and then we'll open up the public again.
I do have a remark on it.
Okay.
When I first read this, I frankly thought it could be a little more toothy with a little more meat in it. However, then I thought about it a little bit more and I just want to put this on the record. I maybe have Michelle put on the record. My understanding, notwithstanding the term this program has run, there have been no write-offs or losses and that last year, and I'll just, I'll give this, Michelle, if I'm wrong, correct me, but I asked Michelle to run the numbers, what did we lose by way of delinquent payments all of last year because we had bigger problem last year than usual? And I was advised $16 was the loss and we collected $2,340 in late fees. So, recognizing that there haven't really been any problems, we haven't had any charge offs or had to pursue anybody and recognizing last year as a bad year generated a $16 loss with a $2,340 late payments, also recognizing that apparently the late payments really weren't being enforced prior to now. And I understand everyone is current now that the late payments have been put into effect. Is that right, Michelle? So, thinking all that through, I frankly didn't think this was all that bad. This is toothier than it was and we didn't have a problem before. So, there's the old saying, if it's not broken, don't fix it because this clearly is more stringent. The only comment I had is I was thinking that if someone goes off and the plan's terminated, it says in here they can come back on again the next year or the next period. I think I would have a suggestion, if someone does that and actually terminates, city has to deal with that and cancel. I think they ought to be obligated to put another month advance if they're going to come back on the next year. That would be my thought. So, other than that, I don't really have any comments on it.
Counsel?
I have just a question. I didn't understand the two months. You said you pay it on the 6th. Isn't it due to PERS on the 10th, but you pay early? I thought that if they hadn't paid by the 10th, that you'd cancel it at the end of May and they would only owe for one month. I didn't understand how you got to the two months.
PERS requires two notice of cancellations, so we would send the first notice of cancellation on April 30th and then we would send the second notice of cancellation on May 10th. We still have to allow time for them to pay after the notice of cancellation.
No, but I'm saying if you send them the second notice of cancellation on May the 10th, that's canceling for May. So, they wouldn't, why would then they be liable for June?
They have to, I mean, it's due process. We send the notice of cancellation, they have to be allowed the time to pay that second notice of cancellation. Once we've sent two and they're still delinquent within our timeline, then we'll forward it to CalPERS for termination. Our timeline is 10 days. If you want, we can bump everything up 10 days.
No, no, no. What I just don't understand is if they require you to give two notifications of termination, you're giving the second one on the 20th in May, that you're canceling for May. So, then why do they owe for June?
Because we bill the month before.
Because they what?
Because we're billing them the month before. So, like if you see on the third bullet point, on May 2nd, we're going to be mailing the invoice for June. So, you can't cancel them before you've given them two notice of cancellation. PERS is guidelines and PERS is the one that actually...
You have, yeah, I'm giving notice for two months?
We gave notice for two months concerning...
May's premium. But effectively, we haven't gone through the process to terminate June's premium. So, if we terminate May's premium via the May 10th and May 20th deadline, we will have paid June's premium, which is due to the city on May 30th, on May 6th. But we're only sending cancellation to PERS on May. It's very complicated.
Okay.
And complex.
There to me.
I still don't understand it, but...
Well, I think, I had the same feeling and what I found is there's the cancellation notices and then the monthly payments. There's two different things going on and actually in quick succession, in 10 days, 11 days, the cancellation notices and that triggers the cancellation at PERS.
My insurance, I looked at my insurance, it says it's due on the 1st. If it's not paid by the 30th, it's canceled back to the 1st and I don't owe the next month. I just wonder why, if the insurance is canceling May, why you just not owe for May?
In order to do that, we would have to front three months' payments in advance. Right now, this is calling for one month premium in advance?
But you're paying, the city is paying for May and May the 10th. Are they, is it paying for May and May the 10th? So, if they don't pay for May, you know, you cancel them by the end of May and then why do they owe for June?
Because we're billing, we're billing in a month in advance. So, you're correct, May, we're doing...
Yeah, right, you bill them in a month advance, you bill them April, 1st of April, you bill them for May.
Yes.
They need to have paid it by April 30th.
Correct.
That's 10 days before you have to pay it. So, then if you give them a $50 late notice, if they don't pay by May the 10th when you have to pay it, they owe $50 more. If they pay it then, they're fine. If they don't pay it then, you give them, you give them another notice and it's due by, what, May the 31st?
20th.
No, May the 20th.
20th.
May the 20th. Okay, then May the 20th, you've given them a second notice, it's canceled. Then how is June? How are they liable for June?
Because on May 2nd, we're billing for next month's...
No, no, but you're billing, but you don't pay PERS till June 10th.
We have no control of when PERS will actually terminate it. Therefore, we are trying to give them enough of a window to where they're going to, when I've talked to PERS, they're like, well, we'll process it. And I'm like, well, how fast is this?
No, no, no. PERS is, PERS is a sophisticated organization. They got to have rules about when they cut off the insurance. I can't believe it. They don't have specific rules about how to cut off the insurance. As my company, they tell me when, if I don't pay by the end of the month, my insurance has dropped, effective the 1st of the month. They do it retroactively. I just, but, but I'm okay with the policy. It's better than what we had.
Yeah.
But I don't, I don't understand why they owe for two months.
I have the question too, Bill, but I think the fact that we have such a great track record with a much less stringent policy tells me we probably won't have a problem and we're picking it up in a month in advance, so I...
But if I, if I were the delinquent, when I'd question whether I'd pay the second month. That's all.
Bob?
No comment.
Well, we'd like to move this out to the public. Any public comment on this particular topic? Anyone wishing to speak? Okay.
Let's do it then.
I'll take it back. Do I have a motion?
I'll make it.
I'll second that.
Okay. There is a motion and a second?
Let me go back to you.
Is any more discussion? And we have Bob and Rick.
Need to actually read the motion, so let me go back to the...
Okay. Please read it. I'm sorry. You're right.
I'm with you. So many things with this computer at once. Motion is to adopt resolution number 2015 3349, which is adopting a policy regarding payments by councilmembers, by members of the council for health benefits through CalPERS. Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
You know, I hate to do this, but I'd like to consider a substitute motion. I lost track during the conversation.
Sorry?
And maybe just a quick feeling from counsel before I do this. As far as collecting an additional month in advance if somebody's defaulted, if they're going to come back on the program after they already defaulted, a sense of whether we want to put that on as an additional protection item if there's already a default?
I see your point, but I think there's already going to be liens and everything else on there. You're not going to be escaping any payment here at all, but I see your point.
Yeah, I mean, if nobody really has a, it's not a huge item.
What are you saying, give them a penalty when they come back on?
No, what I'm saying is if you actually go clear through it default, the city has to terminate your coverage and then you want to come back on the next year or whatever year, then you would have to pay it an extra deposit upfront. So, in other words, you'd effectively be two months. But if, it's not a huge deal. I looked at it when I was reading it.
Again, we had no policy before. We got a policy.
I'm not going to argue and so...
I like to start here, if there's a problem in, fix it later on.
Returning, returning to where we were, yes.
So, there's no second on your, on your substitute motion?
I didn't actually make it. I wanted a little discussion there and I got it and I'm good and I just voted yes.
Very good.
So, motion is to adopt, again, resolution 2015 3349. Mayor Pro Tem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
The motion carries.
One of the issues, I think you always have a right, you know, in open enrollment period to come back in anyway. I don't know whether you can penalize them for coming back in again.
Yeah, I don't think it would be a penalty. You would get full credit for it. You just have to, you just have to pay up a little further advance because of the track record.
You're saying to put a little more restrictions on them?
Yeah, and I just, I did it because I knew it was a huge issue and I wanted to make it clear that we were being serious about taking care of it, but I think honestly, I think we did take care of it.
Again, on my insurance, I signed up for a dental insurance and I found out it wasn't any good, you know, so I dropped it, but they didn't penalize me for the next time.
Were you paid it though?
No, I dropped it. I didn't pay it.
Oh.
We're going to move...
So, they dropped me.
We're going to, I think this is closed. That's good for now. We're going to move the consent calendar and Councilwoman Fasenelli will be here in a moment. So, next we will consider the consent calendar. All items are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda as printed since Wednesday last week. Any member of the city council, staff or public may request an item to be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Council members, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar tonight?
Item three.
Item three? Fasenelli?
I would like to remove item 10.
I also have a comment on item 10 also.
Is this number 10? Okay.
Seven and eight.
Seven and eight. Any others? Tonight, not seeing any others. Do you have a motion to remove, move the rest?
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar.
Can you please read those, Jared? Which ones are still remaining?
Oh, yeah. One sec. Sorry. We have 3, 10, 7, and 8 pulled, so that would be 4, 5, 6, 9, 11, 12, 13, and 14.
Okay. Do I have a motion to move those?
I'll move the remainder.
Second.
I'm sorry.
Do you have another one you'd like to pull?
Yeah, I need to pull 11. It wasn't 10 I wanted to pull. It was 11.
Okay.
I just have a comment. My apologies. Yeah.
We have a motion and a second to approve the balance. Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnett?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Okay, the first item pulled this evening is item number 3.
Yes, I pulled that. I have a question on check number, let's see, 3173, the Villa Park Community Service. This was, well, it's actually check number 27626. It was for 50% of the cost of the Santa Parade. It's my understanding at the foundation meeting that it was voted on by the board that they were not going to pay the remaining 50% on that. Have they notified that? Notified you of that?
I haven't received notification. We've asked for a greater detail, a billing detail from them, but I haven't received any such notification.
Yeah, they did not grant the request to reimburse the city for the candy and for the Santa hats that the councilmen wore because they were not pre-approved first with the foundation. So if you could look into that, that would be great. And with that, I move.
Second?
Second. Oh, I'm sorry. Did you recall him for a second?
Just to approve the warrants and disbursements, Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnett?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Next item is, I believe, item number 7?
Tiny technical issues. This is, this is the, I think this is the minutes from the last meeting, and on page, there is no page, 17 maybe. There's a line here that says, let's see. It's under item 22, policy regarding payments by members for health services. In paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, looks like 6, it says, "I asked if there had been any money lost," and it refers to a .1% loss. I understood we really hadn't sustained any losses, at least other than maybe the 16 bucks that we got paid for. So if I, I don't know whether that's a typo or whether I just misunderstood, but I thought I'd at least point it out. It says, "Councilman Barnett asked if there was any, been any money lost."
Excuse me. Councilman Barnett, there was a letter that was received from the accountants that came to all council people. That was not included in this agenda. That's actually indicated that there was no money.
No money lost?
No money lost at all. That came from the accountants.
That's what I thought.
I'm surprised it wasn't in the agenda here.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So maybe it's just a typo in there where it says .1%. If it is, I guess we just clean it up and take it out. There's no money lost. Okay? Just confirm that again. And then there's one more item. Just, it's just cleanup.
Just number 7 right now, though?
Yeah, it's number 7.
Okay.
Yeah, just 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 lines down. Wait a minute. Excuse me. I think it's on the next page. Oh, yeah, it's under item 23, paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. It says, "Councilman Colacott asks that storm drain infrastructure be included as well." And this could be semantics. What this was talking about was the proposal that we circulate a survey to residents before we spend more than a specified dollar amount. And Councilman Colacott asked that storm drain infrastructure be included. And I was thinking when I read this that he meant excluded because obviously, we don't want to have to go out with surveys for, you know, for streets and storm drain and sewage systems. So I was just clarifying that he was, he had commented to make it clear that he didn't want the storm drain infrastructure cost to have to be included in a survey.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, and I'm not, this could be what he meant, because it says, "Councilman Colacott asks the storm drain infrastructure be included as well." I think, I was thinking excluded from participation in the survey. He may have meant included in the exceptions from the survey. But however we do that, I just want to make it clear that, that he was asking that, that needs to indicate that he wanted storm drain infrastructure excluded from the obligation to be subject to a prior survey.
Is that a correction you both agree on?
Yes.
Okay, so noted. Move that to public. Anyone like to speak?
I'll move it. Oh, I'm sorry.
We're going to have to move it to the public. Any public comments on number 7? Not seeing any. Bring it back to council for any other action comment. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
Second.
A voice vote for the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, number 8. Rick?
Okay, I got to get back to it here. Hang on.
This is from the 21st.
Yeah, this is bouncing around with the computer here, number 8. This is the next set of minutes. Let's see. Oh, this one's simple. I really didn't attend all of that, so I was going to abstain because I really didn't hear all the discussion. So I just wanted to abstain from it, and therefore, I couldn't, I couldn't really approve the consent calendar without carving this out.
Okay.
But there is a correction on here. It says that Wayne Sizel, Villa Park resident, submitted a letter during oral communication, and that did not occur during oral communication. That occurred prior to the meeting even started. I was in here. I was in here, and I believe Mr. Colacott was in here, and the meeting had not started.
That's true, but I think we received and filed this, didn't we, Jared? Okay, all right.
So you filed it even though it wasn't received within the meeting?
We did receive it in the meeting as well.
No.
Received it at the meeting.
Yeah.
I mean, I can take it out of the oral communications if you like. Just note that...
Oh, I didn't, I didn't get a copy of that. It was actually given to me by Mr. Sizel when he walked in here with the five copies and stuck it at the dais for us. And there was no, there wasn't any meeting. So I just want to make that clarification, because I had not seen that until sitting here, when he came in and brought it in. It was not part of the, of the meeting. That was a televised meeting, so...
It's much like the letter that we received from Mr. Metta this afternoon. If it's received after the posting of the agenda, and I get it, and council gets a copy of it, we do make reference to it. And I will keep it in the agenda packets.
Okay.
Or the, my permanent agenda packet.
Okay.
Is that online also? In the permanent agenda packet, so the public won't be able to see that?
If they come into the office, they can.
Any other discussion about that? Megan, is there any issue about that? Should we actually formally enter these in at a later date or something?
With respect to letters received, letters received are public records. If they're intended to be part of addressing something in the meeting or intend to be public comment, it's appropriate to recognize that in the minutes, whether that's, you know, recognizing it under oral communications or elsewhere. But they're, they're part of the public record. They're available for public records.
Should we put them online, though, so that people can see them? Because we have minutes now that don't correspond to the agenda, correspond, wouldn't it be prudent to scan those in as attachments so that the public can actually have access to them?
I'm not aware of cities taking that step to, to put public records online like that. But they're certainly available to anyone, and we can do that if that's something the council would be interested in.
Okay, we can look into that, I think, later.
We can look into that.
Any public comment on number 8? Could we come to podium, Wayne? Thank you.
Wayne Sizel, 18202 Montana Circle. The intent of giving the letter to the staff and then reading the letter here was kind of duplicity, so it was a matter of review. If anyone would like a copy, and if you're, I'll be happy to furnish it at no expense to the city.
Thank you, Wayne. Oh, Wayne, also, while you're up here, I wanted to let everyone know that when you come, we don't really need to have you say your exact address. This is street, and you don't really even have to say just your Villa Park resident. But that's really because of safety concerns, because people do see these meetings, and they can stream them. And your exact address, you don't really need to give that. It's nice if you do, it's up to you, but you don't really have to, so...
Well, Mr. Gunzels here, he'll protect my home.
And just lock your doors. Lock your doors.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
I'll move that if it's time.
I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second?
As these are minutes, we'll take a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Hearing none, the motion carries.
Hey, item 10.
I pulled this one. This is the budget adjustments. I know there were some scheduling issues that Michelle had with getting the Budget and Finance Committee together before this meeting to go over this. But I would rather this, I have a lot of questions, a lot of issues with this. And rather than take up our time tonight, I'd like for you to send this to the Budget and Finance Committee and then come back to the council after that.
Any other comment? Counsel?
Is there any reason why that would cause a problem or delay or...?
No?
No problem. I don't have, you want to make that...
With that, I'm going to go to the public. Are there any public comments on item 10 tonight? Seeing none, rack to council. Any other comment?
I have a motion.
I'm going to move that we send it to the Budget and Finance Committee and come back to the council with it next month.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second?
Voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
None?
No.
Opposed?
41.
Councilwoman Fasenelli? The motion carries.
Did you have any comment on that? Did you have any comment you wanted to make on that?
Well, it was discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee meeting, which we agreed on what was going to occur. So the change here is redundant, quite frankly, because we met, and she made it quite clear what was occurring during that. So I understand you might have further questions, but you could have taken care of those questions prior to coming. But that's okay. I mean, if he wants to refer it back and the majority want to do that, that's okay.
The issue was, they told us they were going to do that, but we did not see what the adjustments were. Now that I see what the adjustments are, I have questions regarding. And I don't want to string out the meeting here tonight with my questions and things. I'd rather we answer in the Budget and Finance Committee, and then we come back here, and we want to take up the council's time.
I mean, we voted on it. That's fine with me. It doesn't apparently cause a problem, so I don't...
Okay.
Okay, is there any other comment before we move this on? Okay?
Mr. Mayor, may I jump in for a second?
Yes, please.
Procedurally, counsel, it'd be preferable if you debate before taking that vote. So...
Yes, I know we...
Yeah. Just...
I know we did. Thank you.
The problem was that the apparent objection showed up in that person, and that person happens to be on that committee, so that stirred some interest, so...
My apologies. Item 11?
I'm pulling item 11 just because when we were in our Budget and Finance and talked about this, it's in the second paragraph. This says it's going to keep retention for the 10 years, and I believe we were, we talked about four. So am I misreading this?
No, because in the meeting, you had asked for 10 years. You said, "I think, let's see what the cost would be for, if we could get 10 years."
Okay.
And so that's why, if you see in the original quote, based on, on the second page, the, where Blackbaud Financial Edge was $34,210. And then below, it says that upon the request of the Budget and Finance Committee, it would cost an additional $5,500 more to convert to 10 years. So either one could be voted on, and because it was recommended for 10 years, that's what the recommendation was.
Okay, so that's where the change was. And that's what I wanted the clarification for that. Thank you. And with that, I would move it.
I'll second.
I have a question.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to have some questions, actually. Oh, what software are we using now exactly versus what this, will this save you a lot of time? It's one thing I want to know.
Not this year. This year will not be fun.
I know a lot about implementing software of all, especially specific, special software, and it never runs smooth. So...
Don't say that.
I want to, I want to make sure that these folks are going to be with you and get it done very succinctly and quickly. So it's getting the reports that you need to satisfy all the entities that you have to satisfy, which is numerous.
That's my goal. That is absolutely my goal.
There's nothing in this contract where all of a sudden, it's another $30,000, another $50,000?
No, no.
And is response time written into this?
Yeah, the, the contract that I will be getting now, that the 10 years has been requested, because that was, that was our last on, was it Friday? I don't remember when that meeting was. But we had requested to have the additional 10 years versus four years of conversion. So it will have an additional front-end time, but that's included.
Okay, how much, how much holdback do we have on these people?
How much what?
Holdback.
I have, well, we're not paying until it's complete. I mean, yeah.
Big holdback, man.
Yeah, no, no. No.
All right, that's good here.
What we're going to do, my, my goal is to start July 1, and that's what we discussed at the Budget and Finance Committee. Starting fiscal year would be just easier, clean, you know, move on versus straddling the year. So I would like to start February and start doing the processing and taking the time and getting all the information out front. And once we do that, I can, you know, chew on the ears as much as I can before July, and then we will transfer smoothly.
Who's your backup, and are they documenting everything?
Who's my backup? Oh, finance?
At some point, you need to have a backup and also documentation that really works in case you're not here in...
Correct.
Seven years.
Correct. That will be part of the process. I mean, this is, the thing that's great is that this is a new software. For when I came in, it was like, "Good luck, learn it." So I didn't have the backup, like you're talking about. But this is going to be a new software, and I'm kind of, you can check my notes. I'm very detail-oriented, and I will be taking more notes than you'll want to read, so...
All right.
I'm sure anybody will be able to do it.
I'm satisfied with that. Public comment on item number 11. Open up to public? Wayne?
I think we all have scar tissue. Wayne Sizel again. We all have scar tissue from buying new software. And I know that the county and the state has suffered, even the IRS is, still hasn't gotten theirs running. I'm worried that, or not worried, but I'm just concerned that if we have had a consultant who has looked at this software and said, "Yes, it will be adaptable to next year's changes and the following year's changes" so that we don't have to spend $39,000 again in a few years to upgrade to the latest system. And I'm using Windows 7.
I like it, too.
I went to Windows 10 and had it removed, and now we're going on to a new version of Windows. I understand. I'm not going to go there because I accomplished what I need to do with my Windows 7. And I'm thinking of going to Linux, which is, which is faster. But I do think that we ought to look ahead to think, are we going to have to go through $39,000 again within four years, three years? What's the age life of this software?
Well, I, I do know that our previous software, we got in 1992.
Yes, I remember.
So it had quite a life. So I don't think this one should be any significantly different.
And to your question, we do have an IT, we have a support company that we use, and I have showed him the software, and he's already looked into it, and he gave me the thumbs up. Yes.
And you're happy with it?
I am happy with what I, yeah, all the demos so far. I'm very happy.
If you were unhappy when you get into the training process, would you bring that back to council?
Oh, yeah.
Good.
I'm not quiet.
And good luck. I appreciate your dilemma.
Thank you.
Michelle, this is the same company, isn't it?
Yes.
Yes, and that's one of the reasons for the, why they, I mean, they're lower, but in cost. But one of the reasons is the conversion is that they have the history with our old software. So getting 10 years' worth of, you know, history into the new software, converting to the new software, we will still have the standalone system of the old software. And if we need to get into it for some reason, their techs have all been trained in the previous, you know, the transition's a lot smoother, so...
And Mayor Mills, we put, the Budget and Finance actually added a 10% contingency for anything that may come up in between, and that is included in this also.
Thank you.
We already have a second on this, in case you forgot.
We have a second. We have a motion and a second.
Motion and a second to approve the purchase of Financial Edge software and authorize Finance Director to amend the budget for $39,800. Councilwoman Fasenelli?
Yes.
Councilman Nelson?
Yes.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Barnett?
Yes.
Mayor Mills?
Yes.
Carries 5-0.
Is that the last one?
Item number 15 now.
Number 15. Mayor and Councilmember Manners, first is a request of matter from Councilman Mayor Pro Tim Barnett, discretionary expenditure policy. Would you please...
Yeah.
Jared, would you...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a policy that Mayor Pro Tim Barnett agendized at the last council meeting. Staff prepared it under the guidelines which were talked about then. Any discretionary expenditure in excess of $100,000, and these are just arbitrary numbers right now, we can pick and choose as we go along the way, will have to be approved and treated by the City Council in this fashion. So, prior to an item, a project, a service being included in the city's annual budget, not identified in the exceptions section, storm drain, annual street, annual sewer, emergency repairs, with a cost estimate in excess of $100,000, shall require survey of the city residents. How we're going to, the survey should include an objective, unbiased, staff-repared summary containing a brief description of the project, the item, the service being considered, a cost estimate, a range of costs, the effect on the budget, a yes/no option, a comment box from the residents, and then direction to actually prepare and release this survey shall be provided by a majority vote of the City Council at an agendized council meeting. Once staff receives the direction to send out the survey, we'll actually have 15 days to prepare and release the survey. And I gave us 15 days in case, I mean, it's a new project and we need to research, become educated on the matter, I want a couple of days to do that. So, once we release the survey, we'll mail them, you know, if it's a survey that should be mailed citywide, we either mail it citywide, we'll mail to an affected area such as Mesa-Loma Valley, we just concentrated on that small portion. We'll publish it on the city's website, in our e-network, the feeder, or in the local newspapers, the Register, the Foothill Century. If there's time, we'll get it into the Hidden Jewel magazine, but usually you have to give notification about 30 days in advance for that. From there, we'll allow residents 30 days to respond and comment to the survey, and then staff will present the results at the next council meeting. Approximately, you know, two months from when we receive the direction to send out the survey. The results shall not be binding on the City Council, and then the City Council will actually then provide direction to staff to move forward with the project, to table the project, or make any amendments as necessary. It's kind of what we have on paper right now, we're just looking for your feedback, and you want to add projects, remove projects, change the dollar thresholds.
Counsel?
I have some comments on this. Since we take everything with this kind of a dollar amount, normally it starts in a committee. So, I'm trying to see what, this looks like it might stall some projects. I understand the background behind it, that we don't want any surprises going to our residents that we're spending, you know, $70,000 or $80,000 on Green Belt projects, but we have a committee process that's public. Why do we need this extra layer? Are we not doing a good enough job maybe in publicizing our committees that they're public? Do we need to have them in the evening versus nine o'clock? Because most of these items, for these big budget items that come up like that, we do do some extensive meetings, and we do have a lot of detail, and I'd just like your thoughts on that, Rick, because this isn't that, we see another layer.
I don't think that, if you want my thoughts, I don't really think that does it. First of all, you know, you've got a limited area, it's not publicized that much, you don't get the summary. I think if you really want to give people a chance to deal with it, you give them a little synopsis, you send it out. I don't know that I agree with the magazines and all this stuff, I think that was a little overkill from my perspective. I was hoping we could just get an email list of those interested, at least get, you know, a pretty good chunk of the population, maybe it's only half, but at least get a big sampling and send it out in an email. I wanted it kind of quick and easy, the summary that was discussed, here it is, make your comments. That gets it in very summary form to a lot of people, real cheap and quick, and we can get the input back. I don't think the other one works that well, quite frankly. I think this is kind of what we need, and I had a couple more items that I would suggest go into that. First, I think the survey results should be posted on the agenda with the item when we have the council meeting. I think the survey results should be announced so that people are aware of it, you can have any discussion, when the item is called. I think the survey should disclose to the residents that it's advisory to the City Council only, and that they can be heard on the item. For those people that might be passionate about it, then they have an opportunity to come down here if they want to, if they want to talk about it. Finally, I think it ought to require a four-fifths council vote to terminate or modify the policy or to override the disclosure as to any particular item. So, if there is something that's just overwhelmingly, you know, desired, it is a discretionary item with council. If they can get a four-fifths plus vote, I guess they can go ahead and, they can go ahead and do it. So, those are my thoughts. I don't think we need to, and sending it to the affected area, I don't think really would work in terms of a notice, because it's really an expenditure item for the city that we're looking at. So, I don't think any area is going to really work. I think we should do is just strive to get a decent email database, and if it turns out to be half the city, it's half the city. I think we should put something in the feeder, you know, and make announcement that we have this policy, and if you would like to please provide your, log your email address onto blah blah blah, or whatever you want, we'll put you on the circulation list. It's a, it's a survey. I don't think we have to get it, you know, it's not like we have to vote and get everybody a ballot. We just need to get a big chunk of the city so we can give somebody a little synopsis and get some input back, and let them know it's advisory and that they can be heard. And I think we ought to have at least a four-fifths council vote, if not more, frankly, to go around it. Maybe it ought to even be unanimous if you're going to usurp it, you know? That way, if everybody's on board, it's like, "We don't really need to do this, the whole council's united on this."
Rick, can I piggyback on that? We had a very successful Saturday. It was, we had, what, six hours of meetings, two hours for each street, and we had residents who's never been in City Council chambers before, and it was very successful. And I think it was because we actually pinpointed the expenditures that we were getting ready, you know, to expend on the city to that particular area, although it was a public meeting, and we did have a few people who didn't live in that area. We didn't get the same 20 people who normally come here. So, the idea of having an email base, I would not do that, because you're going to get the same vocal people that have always been vocal. We're here, we had 200 people here we'd never met, which was wonderful. I think there's a lot of tweaking that has to go along with it. I do like the four-fifths. I do like the four-fifths vote, but I also find it disturbing that you think that maybe our committees are not working, and we might need to look at that.
Well, this is a different scenario. See, I understand what you're saying, I saw a part of that, and I agree, it was very good. But, that was a totally different circumstance, okay? What we got there was people coming in concerned about what you're going to do to their neighborhood. Everybody that came to that meeting that I saw was involved with those streets, was concerned what you were going to do with their streets. This is completely different. This is a fiscal issue of, we want to do something, you want to spend the money, and that is a citywide issue. You would, if you're going to spend, well, this wouldn't be involved here, because that's a street expenditure item, and it wouldn't go. This is really more discretionary items where you've got big spending.
Well, this is a $700,000 project.
Yeah, I understand.
That we brought up.
But, it's a, but it's a street item, and I think it's, I think infrastructure items like that are, would be exempt.
So, give me, give me an idea.
I'll give you an example, I'll give you two or three examples, okay? The, doing the strip down on Santiago where we were going to do all the landscaping, okay? That'd be, that's a citywide discretionary, we wouldn't have to do it that way, not a safety item, a big-ticket item, citywide issue. And it may be that the city says, you know what, because the input you got, the committee was local, and they were very much opposed to having that, because they thought it would draw people from surrounding areas right to their little neighborhood. It's possible if you sent that out to the whole city group, they'd say, "Yeah, we'd like that there," and maybe they'd overwhelm that group down there, and then it would be a policy issue as to who you want to listen to. But, I think this really is as much money as anything else. Another one that probably would have fallen in this, maybe, maybe not, would, in the signs. The underground power poles would have been another issue. In fact, frankly, I think that would have been very helpful, because I think you would have found out rather rapidly that they weren't interested, and we would have saved council time and bickering over that thing. So, if this is more, maybe not completely, but more a monetary issue, I think. The stuff you're talking about are people that are directly affected and are concerned about what you're doing to their area. And that's what you got on the...
Well, that's what we got on Saturday, but, I mean...
Right, you could still do that.
The amount of money that would be potentially spent was way deep into six figures.
Right.
So, therefore, it is expenditure item as you're talking about here.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's what I said.
Bill?
Yeah, could I ask a question?
Please.
I was reading here, it said discretionary spend is, it says a service included in the city's annual budget. Do you mean doing this during the budgeting process or after the budget process?
I never, I never frankly got into that, and I never saw this as a budget process item. I think, I think council and the committee can do what they want to do on budgeting. I'm just suggesting that before you go out and spend money, and maybe you want to do it before you budget it, but really not tying it together.
I was just thinking, it's good to do it in the budget process upfront. Otherwise, you're going to delay doing projects once you put them in the budget. I thought it was very helpful, the meeting that we had on Saturday.
It did too.
I thought it was more than just the streets, it was the money too. They told us, "Why didn't you come to us and ask us before you spent the money?"
I understand that, so that may have gone to the...
I thought the one on the Green Belt, that those were very enlightening. I'm all for getting the public input, but I think the best way to do it is to get it in the budget. You can either do it through budget surveys or budget workshops, where you bring the people into here. You show them what our budget is, you show them what kind of revenue we have, you show them what kind of fixed expenditures we have, and then we have this discretionary money, and get the community's input about how they want to spend that money.
You're not going to get it, Bill, that's the problem.
But, you say you're not going to get it.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you why.
Other cities do this successfully.
I, that may be, but I'm telling you, I've been here for a while, and you're not going to get, you're not going to get the people in here for that. I'll give you a perfect example.
You got them in here Saturday.
I understand, I understand, that was a heated item on that deal for their neighborhoods, and those are the people that came in. Give you an example, the fireworks, okay? Fireworks came in here, and it was unanimous vote, all right? After we passed it, it floated around, people heard about it, and then it turned into a war. Councilwoman Polly switched off and switched her position, and it became a war. They will, you will not, people don't have the time or the interest to come in here and deal with all these items. If you email them with a brief synopsis, they probably, and a lot of them won't even respond to that. But, at least then, hopefully, you'll get some meaningful response, they can push a button, type a couple of letters, and you get it back.
How about prove me wrong then and try?
Well, I tell you what, I think this is a good step forward, and I think it was instructive as you, we all are in agreement on Saturday.
Yeah.
And I think that we, in the future, I think, and we talked to Jared about it as well, we'll have more of a synopsis, and that's part of the survey process. We're letting them know these things are proposals, and we have budget adjustments mid-year with our budgeting anyway. Because all this takes a while to happen.
I'm just saying, why not do it during the budget process, get the input upfront? So, that once you know you have something in the budget, you have the community to support for it.
If you're talking timing, Bill, I don't have any problem at all with that. If you're just talking timing, sure.
Yeah.
My only concern is that instead of surprising people, they don't have the time, and they just don't stay on top. They don't find out until it filters out, okay? All I'm saying is that before we spend big chunks of money on something, we ought to send out, and I think just the e-survey is good.
We're not, we're not in disagreement, I'm just saying...
You want to do it earlier, that's fine.
Yeah. I would support it if you do it during the budget process.
I don't, that's fine.
However you do it, do you do it budget surveys, do it budget workshops, however you do it, get the input during the budget process.
Bob, you have any comments?
I think the budget process is the right way to go. The, or the workshop that we had on Saturday was on a budgeted item, and it was under, I think we had expended $60,000 on that work, that wouldn't have been covered by this policy you're suggesting, $100,000. And, but was, what was budgeted was to address street issues, and that was somehow expanded and include horse trails. And the horse trail, addition to the horse trails and the elimination of all of the trees was what the people were really concerned about, not what was budgeted. So, I think we need to think more carefully about what we're, how we're going to put together our projects and how we're going to present them to the community.
I think the presentation, you're right, is a key item, how we couch it.
There is, there is... Yeah, there is one thing that I do like, regardless of how we do this, is it's possible that we take this dollar amount, and we need to have a four-fifths vote to do anything that, for us to spend $100,000, and I'm just going to use that number because it's here, that maybe you do need to have a four-fifths vote up here before we do that. And that's, I'm talking about the end process.
Okay.
You know, we are elected officials for a reason, so it just, I don't think we're going to decide anything tonight, and we'll have some public comment and come back with it, but I'd just like to throw that out.
Steph, do you have any comments at this point? Megan, anything here?
No, you know, I like concluding it with the budget process, because that way, once we know it's in the budget, we know the residents are in favor with it, and we can get moving on it.
Okay.
As opposed to putting it in the budget and then, you know, conducting the survey in August, September, you know, October timeframe, and then having half, six months to actually complete the rest of it, so...
I don't have any problem with that. The only thing I would like to do is, you want to do that, that way is fine. But, I think when we get to that issue, when we're talking about actually voting and appropriating it, I think it's appropriate to agendize and make comment on the survey as part of that item at that time. That's all I'm saying.
No, absolutely, survey results will be, I mean, it will be in the packet.
Yeah, that's it.
Counsel, I'm going to open up the public. Any public comment on item 15?
Sandra Merk, I like the idea of the feeder. I always read the feeder. I would put my input in. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Sandy.
Let me ask a question, Jared, how many people are the feeder?
That's what I was going to get to right here. The one thing with the feeder right now is we have approximately 800, 700, 800 subscribers.
Yeah.
But, per subscriber, it doesn't actually list your resident's address. We have businesses, we have, you know, folks from the surrounding area, I think I have two or three emails on it. So, the best thing to do is to build a database. We'll put a notice out to the community. We'll let them know that, hey, we're specifically looking for residents' addresses, and here's why. We'll kind of lay out the game plan for us, and that way, we'll have kind of two separate databases, one of feeder subscribers, and then one of, you know, discretionary policy subscribers.
I was going to say, I think that's a great idea. I mean, it really would not hurt in this day and age to have as comprehensive an email database for our city as we can. It's a tight-knit city, it's quick, it's cheap, it just makes sense, it's like not having their addresses 20 or 30 years ago when you were doing mail. It just makes sense to get it.
Okay. With that, do we want to have a motion, or we want to continue this to the next meeting?
I'd like to continue.
Public, we've already had the public, and we can, and we brought it back to council again. I didn't really close public comment. Is there anybody else that'd like to comment? So, I'm closing public comment?
I do have a suggestion.
Yes?
Jared's heard a lot of the comments, we kind of agreed on, sounded like we almost agreed, agreed pretty much everything. So, I'm thinking maybe Jared could bring back the specific language incorporating the way we talked about, and he could think about his notice or whatever, and come back to us with a specific thing, and then maybe next meeting, we could actually vote on it.
I agree.
So, we can move that to the next meeting?
But, we'll have it during the budget process and have staff to come up.
Yeah, that's fine.
Have staff come up with a way to do it.
Well, let's come up with a mechanism.
Same concept, you're just moving it out earlier, and then when we actually move an item, we'll disclose it.
So, we have a mechanism that you'll write up for the next meeting? Do we need to have a motion on that? Move it?
Do we need a motion or just a consensus?
We'll do a motion and a vote, then, a motion and a voice vote. We'll do a motion to vote and then, a motion and a voice vote.
Okay.
I'll second.
Everybody wants it once. We'll just continue it and we'll come back in February.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. We'll bring item back in February.
Item number 16.
Tweeted a little bit and moved it up.
This is a additional funding for the senior mobility program and I brought this to the council. Jared, do you have any background on this?
Yeah, this is an item that you brought to the council this morning.
So this is an item concerning the additional funding for the senior mobility program. As you recall, I, sorry, my PDF lost a sentence in here. City entered into a contract with Orange County Transportation Authority in January of last year to fund a senior taxi program. The funding exhausted at the end of last year, 2015. We received approximately $10,000 for the full fiscal year. It's based on a half cent sales tax. Because the funding exhausted, the program terminated until we can find additional funding.
And did we have extra expenditure from the city because of this program?
We have had extra expenditure from the city. We have a grant request, as I understand, in with the foundation. Right now, we're not going to replenish our funds until July 1st when we get more money from Orange County Transportation Authority. So what the mayor's proposing is that the city fund an additional $10,000 to the program to carry us out through the end of this fiscal year, which is June 30th, 2016. But we will adjust the parameters of the program. Riders and participants are now responsible, would now be responsible for a $5 copay per one-way trip. Travel will be limited up to 10 miles instead of the 20 miles. And then participants would be limited to eight one-way trips per month or four round trips essentially. With those new parameters, we should get through the end of the fiscal year.
Actually, this is a work in progress. I mean, there's good and bad about this, this particular way of doing it. We had certain residents that really took advantage of this, to be polite. And so therefore, some of the folks did not get to ride to different destinations as we'd anticipated. But we would like, we do like the fact that some of our, a lot of our seniors are actually getting to places they weren't, and they're not, I mean, shut-ins as much. And that's a good thing, I think, a very good thing. They're getting a doctor appointments, they're doing some shopping, things like that. And they can take a friend with them too, of course, from town here as well. I brought this up just to see if we could talk about it tonight. We don't have to do anything, of course. There may be a lot of dissension in the public or pro or con on this, but I'd like to open it up, counsel, to see if they have any other ideas or.
I do. Having brought this program here, yeah, originally to the city, and I said it last month and I'll say it again. My intention was to only use, I call it this unfounded money that we had never used. And once that pool of money was finished, the program would be over until we got the money again and not to use any city funds. This was a way of allowing some of our seniors to go wherever they want and it doesn't matter where they go. We did have some abuse on it, call it baby steps in the program, but quite frankly, even if those people did not abuse it like they did, we would not have made it in another year. It's not enough money. It's based on sales tax revenue, so we don't have it. So I don't agree with having the city spend any money when it comes to this. We did have to spend some money because we didn't catch it in enough time and was obligated to pay a couple thousand dollars. What we have is we have other options. There is a program through OCTA. It's called the Access Program. It does take people, picks them up from certain locations, your home, about 80% of the residents here in Villa Park would be able to be serviced by Access. Whether you're disabled, whether you're elderly, there are other parameters that you apply for. And that is through OCTA. We are bringing OCTA here on February 1st to do a seminar on the program, tell people how it works, tell them what they need to do to sign up. They can come here, we'll make appointments for them and they'll need to go down to OCTA and to apply for it. That program, the way it works is you pay anywhere from $2.50 to $5.00. They pick you up and they take you wherever you want. Whether it's bingo, whether it's a restaurant, doesn't matter. And that has always been available to the public. There's a couple residence areas here that is not serviced by it because of where they're located and they will identify those. So that will be February 1st at 4 o'clock. With that.
Next week?
March 1st, excuse me, March 1st, I apologize. March 1st at 4 o'clock, from 4 to 5. With that, Bob, thank you for taking the request to the foundation. We can't dictate where people want to go, so I appreciate you taking it. And they, for them to tell us that we can't have our residents go to a restaurant or go to a doctor's appointment, you know, we're asking for a grant to assist us and to assist the residents, but we can't limit, you know, where they're going to go. So I mean, that's, hopefully, if you go back to a meeting, you can change their mind for something like that. Because if we accept money from them, we can't ask residents where they're going. This was a program to allow them, if they wanted to go to the other side of Villa Park and play poker or, you know, canasto with their friend, they could and then come back in the afternoon because they don't drive anymore. So it's not for us to say, but I think, I hope they change their mind when it comes to that. But we can't put parameters of whether they have a driver's license because the senior transportation, it's not about having a driver's license. It's about being 60, I think is what we did it, 60 and older.
60 plus, yeah.
60 plus. So those are my thoughts on the recommendation and certainly I brought an alternative that has always been there with OCTA. And on March 1st, if you can't make it, please contact Jared or myself and I'll be happy to assist you.
That'll be right here?
That'll be here in City Hall.
The feedback that I described was the feedback I received from the members of the Community Services Foundation. I was relating that back to this group. And I think that what Mayor Mills has identified in his agenda item is he did identify some criteria which could be included in our grant proposal to the Community Services Foundation. I'm in agreement with you. This was, this was, is a OCTA grant program, not a City of Villa Park program. We certainly provided the, you know, our contribution was our staff support in terms of administering the program within the City of Villa Park. So we are contributing our resources, but on our financial resources. You know, we've got a, we've got a request into the Community Services Foundation. Let's hear what they have, come back with us, how they can come back to us on February. Maybe they'll give us bridge funding to get us through till July 1st and we can install the, you know, start implementing the new criteria and we can make the, whatever resources they provide carry us through till July 1st.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yeah, I have to concur with our former mayor's comments. This program was funded with OCTA funds. It's a big step to start spending city money on it. I disagree in that, in terms of control, I have to agree with Bob that I don't see why we can't put reasonable parameters on the program. But I don't think we ought to fund it at this point and frankly, I think it needs to be funded by OCTA. And I think it needs based may have to come into it if, you know, if there is enough motivation to get this going further and put any money. I think needs based going to have to play into it. My perception is that would be a foundation criteria. I was at the meeting a little after Bob left. So, you know, I think we need to set parameters and try initially to limit it to OCTA and then we can evaluate it after that. And if there really is a need and, you know, people can't afford it, whatever, then we could think about it further, but.
Greg, excuse me, there, Jared, there is a separate program to get seniors to doctor's appointments available, correct?
Yes, yes, councilman. Usually whenever residents will call in about even the senior transportation program, we try to coach them of what other resources are available to them out there. But yeah, the council on aging, I believe, provides medical transportation for $2 one way. So there are other resources out there and we try to help them.
So even though the taxi service is not funded at the moment, there is a way for our seniors to get to their doctor appointments.
And that's what Access does also. And we have many, many residents who use it. I mean, I myself, you know, have family members who use it and they, they come from Montebello, you know, using it. So it's there, but you have to take the time, just take the time to make the phone call and to go through the interview and the paperwork. And hopefully, we're going to assist our residents and facilitating that here on March 1st and help them out.
With that, I'd like to open up the public. No public comment? Bring it back to council. Yes, I, the reason I brought this tonight is because I got a lot of requests to keep it going. And so I brought it to council. It sounds like that's not going to work tonight, but I do understand that we do have a grant request in, or we're getting one into the foundation. I can see your point about not using city funds for this, but again, it's another way that we can get our seniors around. And there's a lot of folks that, of course, are living longer now and they're losing their driver's licenses as we all know. So I'd like to make a motion for this, but if I don't get a second, I guess it'll die. So I have a motion on the floor and seeing no second, I guess we'll let this one die for now. Item number 17, individual council member information items and attendance reports. We kind of took care of that earlier as far as the attendance reports. Is there any other items that any council people would like to discuss tonight?
Yeah, I attended the Serrano Water Board meeting and I just want to make sure that everyone is aware there is a vacancy on the Serrano Water Board. It is in District 3. They are taking resumes and applications. If you are interested and you live in that district, please give them a call. And I think you've got about two more weeks, maybe a week left that you can submit your resume and then they're going to be interviewing for an interim board member. So if anyone's interested in that, that would be great.
Diana, do you know where that geographical area covered by that district?
It's where Mr. Mills lives. Martin, are you?
Basically Serrano and the northeast section of town and also parts of Orange up on Summit Ridge, that area. There's a lot of orange in that particular area.
And the other, next item? Anybody else like to comment tonight rather than what they've already done?
You know, go ahead.
Okay, yeah. I was appointed by the president of the League of Cities to the environmental, let's see, the Environmental Regulatory Policy Committee for the League of Cities. And so I attended their first meeting last week and the agenda addressed funding waste management, infrastructure, emergency drought regulations and it appears that this will become permanent and capping trade emission programs. And they also discussed the development of a committee work program for 2016. So environmental regulatory programs affect our city. Certainly, we spent a lot of money on our stormwater compliance program. It affects our construction programs like our street, street programs and the other major construction activities we may have in town. It also can affect local development, private development projects and certainly affects a lot of jobs and industries throughout Southern California, which of course affects our property values. So I think this is an important committee and I look forward to making contributions and I'll keep the council updated.
Thank you. Thanks for volunteering. Anybody else? I'd like to close then the individual member comments and move to item number 18. This is a continuation. This is consideration for making the Villa Park Marine Thanksgiving a city event. Jared?
Councilman Burnett, it's your turn.
You know, we discussed this before. The proposal was to fund up to $5,000 toward the Villa Park Marine Thanksgiving program with the contemplation that we seek the same commitment basically, or I would, from the Rotary and from the foundation. And I have met with both of them. I will tell you that I don't have responses from any of them. I had a meeting with Rotary. I got a feel for where I think it was headed and I'll be happy to share that. And I did the same thing with the foundation and they requested a grant request, which I did submit. And I, I kind of got a gut feel. I mean, this certainly can't take this to the bank. But my perception is that Rotary probably won't commit to $5,000 because they've got $9,800 in their community service funds and they say that it's tight to do it. My guess is it's probably going to be something, instead of doing it up to, I think they're going to propose a number, 2,000, 2,500 bucks, something like that and just say, we'll fund this every year. We can budget it and we'll fund it. I think that's what's going to happen with Rotary. Foundation, unless I miss my guess, I think the foundation probably will approve it, but that remains to be seen. I didn't see a lot of opposition to it. The city last time, really the problem or the issue seemed to be the procedural aspect of it because I was trying to get the city to play administrator to some extent. And that's where, as I recall, I got some head shaking and a little bit of pushback resistance. So I thought about that some more, how to deal with that issue and move it on. And I actually talked to the other, to the other organizations and I thought about it. And, you know, I frankly have to return to my thought that the city still makes the most sense. I had some discussion with Jared and so I think that here would be my suggestion and I'm going to ask that council maybe approve this on a conditional basis. But here's the story. This program doesn't take a lot of time. It's not a time intensive matter and it's short. It's a couple, three months, probably three months where you're going to have to play with it. September, October, maybe a little in August, questionable. September and October is when you're going to have the activity. November, end of November is Thanksgiving. That's when the event occurs. But you really have to have it all in place by the end of October because you have to submit a spreadsheet to the, to Camp Pendleton, you know, by the end of October realistically, so that they can prep, gear up and get allocated because they have other people participate, a lot of them. And frankly, I think what they're doing is they're holding a spot for us to make sure that we're covered because we do, we basically do more than most do for the Marines. And they've actually kind of used it as an incentive and announced it to the kids as an incentive, you know, that honor platoon or whatever is going to Villa Park. So you need to get them the numbers. So realistically, although it could overlap a little bit, by and large, it's a September, October event. It doesn't take a lot of time. I don't know, maybe 10 to 20 hours. It's hard to pick the time because there is no particular big expenditure of time. It's an issue where somebody calls and has a question or maybe they come by or somebody wants to drop a check or they'll call and say, can we donate some money to this? You know, what do we do? And it's just having somebody there to do that and then having somebody at a known location so that you can get it done. Comments were made, well, you know, the foundation does things. They do, you know, all the parades and blah, blah, blah and the picnic and all this. How do they do that? Couldn't they do this? And I thought to myself, gosh, I haven't really seen anybody at either one of those organizations that would really be that fixed that could kind of make this stable and institutionalized. And after a little sniffing around, I discovered that the foundation is basically using the city to do some of that for that very same reason. When they get, when they get reservations for the boat parade. Somebody's got to administer that paperwork. It's not horrendous, but.
And it's an issue. So keep that in mind. It's an issue.
And so, so that's what, that's what they're doing, okay? And I think to make this stable, that's probably what you want to do. I don't think it's going to take any big investments of time. If it's a monetary issue, I think you, I think the fund would be more than sufficient to easily reimburse the city for the actual costs on the, on the people's time. It's not going to be a big time consumer. It's just going to be the sporadic issues during that period of time. They really, there are only two things that really, I mean, there's a variety of things need to be done, but it's the clerical issues that at least cause me a problem. I'm happy to carry on or pass it on to others after I'm gone, assuming it carries on, to pick up the rest of it. It's not a, not a big deal. What I can't do is the, is dealing with the accounting and getting the applications and doing the Excel spreadsheets. I've had staff in my office doing it and I can't do it anymore. So really what I would be looking for would be the city to handle during that brief period of time. In fact, they already get some of the calls. So now they just actually be able to do something with it. A lot of it's done online and people sign up. That's where most of it happens. But sometimes the calls come in, hey, just go online and do it. As soon as somebody signs up, it sends an email with their contact information and they should send you a little one-page application that Marine Corps requires. So not a huge deal, but you got to keep that together. And then when you're done at the end of the period, you know, the end of October, you take the Excel spreadsheet, you take the one-page applications, you scan them in as a group and you email them down to the base and then they take care of the bulk of it after that. That's all I would be looking for the city to do.
Hey Rick, have you, just a suggestion. Have you gone maybe to the National Charity League or the League of Young Men to take that on? Because that's something that, what you're describing, it doesn't take that much. That is something that, say the League of Young Men, you would have the, an 11th grade class, the moms are there.
It's the same problem you've got with Rotary. It's the same problem you've got with the foundation. You don't have the continuity and the stable contact point. That's the problem. I've been that for 13 years.
But we do that.
Rick, I don't understand when you say don't have continuity and a stable point. Do we have the same directors over and over in the foundation?
Who's going to hand, who, Bill, who at the foundation is going to handle that?
Just the way they handle the picnic, the way they handle the boat parade.
They pass it off to the city?
No, they don't pass it all off to the city.
They pass it off to Ed Carter.
They, they, right.
Who's not part of the foundation?
Right, right. Well, he is part, he's a volunteer with the foundation. He's not a director, but he's a volunteer at the foundation. They find volunteers to take on these tasks and run these. For example, Carr does run the picnic. He hasn't always run the picnic, but he's running. Now, they've had previous people in the past. They assign someone to get these things done and they have a contact person for it. They could find you someone that's volunteer with the foundation or one of the foundation directors to run the program.
And the printed materials that are floating around and stuff, where's the contact? And every time somebody changes, do we change the phone number and the emails every time?
The same, they could have the same contact all the time until they move off to another volunteer and then the contact would change. But you can't tell them that the foundation doesn't have continuity.
No, the foundation has continuity.
And the foundation.
But I just don't think you're going to find it's going to work as well trying to get somebody to familiarize and, you know, every year and they handle the spreadsheet and they futz around with that. I mean, that's just my impression.
On the other hand, the city has a very limited staff. I would be surprised if they had 20 hours that they're not doing anything.
I don't know.
I think.
If they tell you that, then we're overstaffed.
I think this is a very good discussion.
Let me tell you what my suggestion was going to be, okay? Because I remember I said conditional. Unless Jared and staff are comfortable after seeing exactly what's involved, I don't, I won't even make the motion. I don't even want them to take it, okay? So I see kind of as a two-pronged. Number one, will we, will we apportion the budget up to that amount, up to the 5,000 a year? And as far as the city's involvement in it, I would, I would propose that be conditional upon Jared looking at it. After, we can sit down and have some discussion. I can pull all the stuff, show exactly how the flow, I can show him forms and documents. And if he's, and we can, and we can fund the city for what they do. And if they want to use an intern or something, that at least they've got people there and we've got a fixed location. So they want to use an intern, whatever they want to do. But my suggestion would be, one, we vote on funding it up to that amount. And two, as far as the city's participation, that that be conditional upon Jared concurring that this does not look like a burden and we can take care of it. If he tells me it doesn't look real practical, he's not comfortable with whatever, I'm done. It doesn't matter to me what the council says. I'm done because that's, that's his area.
Okay, well, we don't have to have this, I mean, if there's more, a discovery that Jared has to do.
Yeah, why don't we just, why don't bring it back this next week?
Then at least, let's figure it out.
The other avenue here is that the budgets for the foundation, Rotary, don't start again until July 1st.
That's fine.
But so.
It's advantage until November.
You were mentioning that there's existing budgets. This is the right time of year to start talking to those organizations about their future budgets because the amounts that you have now, those are all malleable. They can change for the next year. And I think they'll build up a acclamation to this. I mean, I think this is something they're going to want to do.
I mean, I, I think this is something they're going to want to do. And I, and I think you're right that we're, we're having a matching fund here is what you're trying to find out really.
Yeah, except that I don't, I think Rotary is going to prefer to just set a dollar amount, say, we're in for this. Whether you need it or not, we'll put this in every year. That's what they seem to be leaning toward, right? I think the Foundation's probably on board. I've done everything I can do with them. I've made the request. I submitted the, the funding grant request to the Foundation. So I've done everything I can do. Some of them look back and go, what's the city going to do? So here's my suggestion. At a minimum.
We can't get the $8,500 sitting in their bank account to, to the city since August. I'm not comfortable that they're going to give the city five grand for the.
I don't think you're going to need five grand. This is not five grand. This is up to $5,000, okay? So Rotary's got, I left Rotary with $2,800 in their account already. So they put 2,000, they got, you know, $5,000 in there they can run on. But what I'd like to do is at least vote on the issue of are we prepared to fund this program? I'm not sure it's going to go yet, okay? We've got to figure it out.
I would be more apt to fund the whole thing and hire someone for six weeks, you know, on a contract basis every year to take care of it. Because then you know the program's going to succeed. It then becomes a city program.
That's fine, too.
It doesn't become, hey, let me find a volunteer. You find an, an intern, it's a contract, you pay them whatever, $1,000 for their time. They come in here, they use the address and it's a city. Because I believe in the program. I think it's a great program.
Well, that's, that's fine, too. This, this, I, I basically told them that this year was going to be my last year to be able to do this. I caught an awful lot of heat from three groups and I felt bad and I told them that I would strive to preserve the program. So I frankly don't care how we do it. I will continue to provide service. I can't do the accounting, finance, blah, 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 end of it anymore, but I will continue to administer the rest of it unless somebody else wants to take it over. It's not that big a deal. But it needs to get something so we know where it's going and we're going to end up running out of time.
Any other comment? Bob, see you.
I really like your program. I think it's a great service program and, you know, it's, it's something nice to see every year at Thanksgiving. However, I also like the other service programs we have going on in the city. We have a lot of things, some not nearly as visible as yours, but some are more significant and more important than yours. We have the Villa Park Little League. We have the Rotary. We have a resident, I think on Lincoln, that heads up a Alzheimer Support Foundation. We have volunteers that do fundraisers for CHOC. One of our residents heads up a Paralyzed Veterans Foundation, which has got nationwide recognition, but very, I think there's only a handful of us in Villa Park that know about it. And of course, we've got the Neighborhood Watch Program. There are probably scores of service activities and foundations in Villa Park. However, I am opposed to using, you know, the city taking over a service activity or a service organization, whether it's yours or Villa Park Little League or the Alzheimer Support Foundation or the Paralyzed Veterans. That's what we have services foundations for. You've raised a number of issues that you're facing in your foundation and they're no different than the very same issues that every one of these other service activities find. You've got to come up with the accounting, you've got to come up with volunteers, you've got to come up with points of contact. That's, those are, those are problems that we all have to solve. We've all been involved with service organizations, we all deal with that. But we don't come to the city and say, okay, city, I want you to A, fund it and B, do all the legwork. I'd encourage you to work out in the community. I know there's a lot of support for this program throughout the city. Get volunteers. You know, get somebody that can help you with the accounting, you know, spread out the work, develop an organization and do it that way. Do it the way that other service organizations do it, not just, you know, conveniently put it on to the, to the city. I, I don't know whether, you know, us providing a $5,000 donation to the, to your particular service organization would be a gift of public funds. I mean, it's not a public activity. It's not a city activity. And, you know, as far as this fall goes, I know that we've got one of our staff members that's going to, expects to be leaving. We're going to be shorthanded already this fall, you know, to add additional non-municipal related assignments. This not, not the good time to be doing that. Anyway, again, I'd encourage you to solve this, the very same problems that our other service organizations solve daily with your organization and, you know, keep us posted on your events and we'll support you as much as we can personally, but not as a city.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, I'm opposed to the city running it as well. I think the Foundation is the, would be the best place to run it. I'm, I would support supporting it, you know, financially, although I would like to know more than just a $5,000 request. You know, with any grant request, I'd like to know what you're going to do with the money.
Well, here's the thing, I mean, let me respond to two items if I could. First, Bob's deal about gift to city funds. Before I even came to council, I went to county council and discussed that gift to public funds and, and I was assured it's not even an issue.
I, 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 I agree. I checked as well.
Secondly.
That was my first, that was my first question, is a gift to public funds. It's, it's for a public purpose and the council can determine what the public purpose is. And as they tell me, has wide discretion in what, what that public purpose is. So I, I agree with you there. So I would, I would totally support providing funds to the organization as long as we have some kind of counting about what it's going to be used for.
Here, and here's.
But I, but I'm opposed to the city running the program.
I understand.
I think you should look at one other service organization than the city to run it.
Let me, let me just briefly address the money issue because that part's easy. The other one's a little more difficult, but that one's easy. Up to $5,000 is the way it's structured and all it would do was, we only, we only do about two or three things. We pay for transportation, we buy them watches as gifts, and then we have inconsequential stuff, you know, parchment paper that we buy, the, the stationary down here to print up their thank you for your service letter stuff. So those expenses tend to be inconsequential. That's really it. And you can't give a firm budget, which is the reason I said up to, because every year the gift prices vary. You've got to see what's available, what the market is and what you can get. So that varies. The only other thing that's be a bit of a variable would be, there was some consideration given to buying down the cost to some extent. Instead of charging, right now we charge $240 for the two, for the two Marines to try and cover this stuff. It's getting really tough to hold the numbers at that anymore. So there, there was a thought that instead of charging 240, maybe we charge 150 for the two Marines and subsidize it to $90. And if you did that, that would be, you know, that would be a $4,500 subsidy, assuming you had 100 Marines come in. So there would be $4,500 and whatever you've got. I frankly have been carrying this program with about, with donations of probably, I don't know, maybe, maybe 5,000 bucks, 5, 6,000, 4 to 6,000 dollars. I've been carrying it. So I really don't think you're going to see the $5,000 number hit, but since, since you don't know what it'll be, that was a cap. I'm guessing realistically, the number might be more in the range of, I don't know, 7,500 bucks or something like that. And Rotary'd probably pick up a, I think they're going to come back with something in a third of that. So it might be $2,500 from the city, so.
Hey Rick, can I, to make a suggestion, if we bring this back next month, if you allow me, and I don't have any idea if I'll be successful at all, but if you allow me maybe to go look and see if there's a service organization that wants to take on the administration. If, if, given that we'll get the funding, if you'll allow, maybe I can come back next month and see if I can find somebody who would volunteer to do that.
Yeah, that's fun. I would just like to, because I'm getting, you know.
Because I like the city event.
Yeah, I'd like to know.
And I think it, it looks good on the city of Villa Park. If it could do the whole thing, I would vote for that, quite frankly, because I think that that's where it belongs and it's good for our city. And it is a city event. They come into our center, I mean, they come into our center and I'm proud that they want to come here. And the other cities do it also. So I would certainly hate for it to, you know, end up at somebody's house or, you know, at the school or what have you, because I like them coming into the city.
I don't want, I don't see it, I don't see it as a big expenditure item. I don't want to make it a big expenditure item. However, you know, it is tough. These kids come up and say, you know, they're so appreciative, this is the best day of our lives, you know, and then we get emails, some of them get blown up. So, you know, it's like.
You know, bring it back in their mind.
I can't tell you how you feel because I've had that happen. At least two of my groups have told me it's the best day of their life and then you find out a kid got blown up and then it's when you really realize how important it was, you know? You look at it and say, I gave this guy the kid the best day of his life before he got blown up, so.
It's, it's a great program.
All I would like to do is.
I, I think we're, we need to bring this back and do a little more research. I think the spirit here, Rick, is outstanding.
I just would like to know whether council is at least committed to the up to $5,000 budget item because the other organizations are asking me, and I'm like a pinball going back and forth, you know? It's, it's, at some point, I'm going to.
If it got to the point that we were voting, I would be in support of it.
Me too.
We're not there at this point, but.
I'd be in support as long as, as long as I see some numbers behind it, what, what it's for.
Now.
You know, for, for example, you know, how many Marines do you, how many Marines do you bring in typically?
Usually, the, I would say the average over the last five years has probably been 125, 30?
125. You know, if you got, if you got 125, what it costs for transportation, how much it costs for, for their, for their gifts, you know?
Well, I think I might cap it because see, I, I just make sure you keep it within budget.
What, that's what I'm saying, just show me a budget of what your, what your budget is. That's all.
Well, we're not there, we're not there yet.
Also, it's been hard to keep it down, too. They, they creep up. So I think we need to bring this back.
Gift creeps up.
Next month.
But I, I think we all would support the program.
Yes.
And I think most of us would vote for providing some funding for it.
And also.
But we just don't want it administered.
We, we, we want, we want this to keep going. This is one of our signature events. We have three of them in a quick order. We have the Halloween Fest, we have the Marine Thanksgiving, and then we have the Boat Parade. And Santa Claus. All this happens all at once in the, in the budget of the, of the city. And we're kind of tapped out in January, obviously. So I think for now, I, is there, could we go to public comment?
Yes, I would like to comment.
Okay.
Again, you guys have spent 35, 40 minutes on this $5,000 issue. I'd, I'd kind of suggest you keep it in perspective, both as to what is the city business and what is a, a very noble and one worthwhile program. I think you should, I think you should come with a budget and a presentation like you would with any other issue before the city, rather than bring it up for general discussion. I think Mr. Nelson's comments were in order that you should have it in a more formal presentation. Number two, I agree with Bob Colicot that I believe that we're using city funds. When we were on, when I was on council, we had the same requests from the band boosters, the Little Leagues, and we had to say, hey, it's taxpayers' money we're spending here. And if we support one, we're going to get requests for more and you will too if you approve this. I don't think that you want that because you have a tight budget as it is for all